Call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Wednesday, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. And can I get confirmation confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton Pigly Wiggly, Hometown Ace Hardware, and Milton City Hall.
Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance. Public comments for items that can be affected by council action. And Linda Clark, you may come up. First and last name and address. You have three minutes.
Who's the timekeeper?
You are, as the president.
I I promise I won't overdo the three minutes. I'm I'm sure that you're probably not surprised to see me here. I, as you all received the email that I sent after last meeting. And I I had to come in to express my disappointment. But my disappointment does not just go out to the it doesn't go just go out to the council for your decision that you made. That that disappointment goes to the citizens that we have, it throughout the community, that for some reason think it's all right to push people out to the street to walk. That is my disappointment. And I just wanted to make that clear. I think a lot of people know me as the sidewalk lady. The things that I just want to speak on is this particular area that we're talking about is within two miles of one of our elementary schools. Now, if you go and you look online to see what is available in our school district, including West, you'll find that there are lots of stuff. There's so many things that lots of families can't even keep up. we have this city and community that is very adamant about having these types of things for our kids, which is awesome, because we need to have these. Our kids need these. We live in a country that is very unhealthy. And it has been. It didn't just start four years ago, and we all know that. I think it has something to do with sugar. But the problem is that as many things as we have in our school district for the kids and the families, and then, of course, we've got a few places where you can do some memberships and you can do a go in and and do your workouts there. But walking is free. And it's something that people expect when they move into a city. I have always wondered why it is that you would move into a home.
Linda, your three minutes, three minutes is up.
My three?
Yeah.
Can I have?
Wrap it up. Not one more, but you can wrap it up.
Okay.
One last sentence in summary.
If you have a sidewalk put into your driveway, that's a pretty clear indication that you're going to get a sidewalk. But you have to remember that that sidewalk is not just for you. It's for the whole city. It's for all the residents that are here today, and more importantly, here in the next twenty years. Because this response, the responsibility that we have as citizens is to intentionally grow this city with our city council
Okay, thank you.
in a way that supports everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of you and all of your time, and I'll be watching to see what your team building is.
You make sure you stay for it.
No, I'm gonna go home and watch.
Chief Pickering.
Although then I would stay under three minutes. I don't know if I said this at the January meeting, but I certainly want to say it so I don't I don't forget it. We're going into a year where just things feel much, much better. And I know the board and everybody on the east side, you know, kept hearing the issues were all west side issues, and they were. But as the mayor would attest, the west side has stepped up. We've added the additional staffing over there. We're in the process of getting them on board. And I just think it's taken a ton of stress and a ton of, you know, how are we going to get through this, right? When you start out in a hole and all you keep looking at is a downward slope, it's a whole different year. So this hopefully will be a lot more fun. That said, as you can see, January over January was a thirty, what is it, thirty-eight percent increase. February over February last year is already at a twenty percent increase. A lot of the municipalities of, you know, what what's the drivers behind it? And for the most part, other than the weather-related stuff, which we all kind of get, just the general aging of the population, the number of ambulance calls and the number of things we're doing that are age-related is pretty significant. So that's kind of where we're at. In terms of Milton itself, the numbers when this was done as a preliminary were way outside the norm. That's why you see the Xs there. We found the air. You're actually in the five-minute range, which where you've been for a long, long time. So I just didn't get that updated. But you had fifty-three nine-one-one incidents during the month of January. Inspections are going well. Staffing is going well. If you flip over financially, we're starting to see the benefits on the revenue side starting to come in. So that's a good thing. Expenses are, at least through January, running a little bit below planned, and that that is well-known because we've not started to actually add the additional staff over in the West yet. That's going to be phased in through the year. So we're doing really well there. Significant emergency events, again, all three of those fires that are listed there were weather-related, heat, temporary heating equipment used in ways that maybe it probably shouldn't have been. We kind of get that. Dawn Harvest, who is building the solar or, yeah, the solar farm down in the towns of Harmony and that direction down there, provided a five-thousand-dollar donation to the district. Yvonneck, which is obviously a citizen of yours, they provide a thousand-dollar donation. We we had the the training exercise again, Mark and Mark, we were all, or Brandon, we're all part of that. They have been very open, and I think I've said that before. They've been very willing to work with us. They want us to know what we're dealing with there and and just have been a really good corporate citizen. Repairs to the engine that was struck out on the interstate came to one-hundred-and-ten-thousand. It's in the process of being repaired. Maybe the biggest thing, the board has got a resolution in front of them tomorrow night to approve the construction manager to move forward with the fire station's projects. We had six bidders, and they were all the the big ones, the chewed expect. Narrowed it down to two. Those were interviewed for a better part of a day, and the recommendation will be made to the speaking of calls, recommendation will be made to the board tomorrow night. Oops, all I got.
Any questions?
As always, I appreciate the courtesy. I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Stay warm.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak on public comments? Does anybody, do you want to speak on public comments? Okay, come on up. First and last name and address.
Derek Henze, address one-one-five-three Brown Drive. And this is just public comments to item number thirteen. So I appreciate the work, and I saw the notes to the ad hoc committee, and I thought it'd be appropriate to be one of the persons that do a lot of the events in town, just give some comment as you guys are deciding what to do with with these items. So am I speaking good enough? Is it close enough to the microphone? So.
And it's three minutes.
Three minutes. Yep.
Yep.
Got it.
We'll start now.
Okay, thank you. So just a couple of different things is, I think the primary thing with all these items is just good communication. A good example is like with Chief and I, we always have a pre-meeting before the fourth, months in advance. I've had that policy for years since I started taking it over. And then we have a post-wrapped meeting afterwards. What can be better? You know, where are some new concerns, like the size of the festival? Private security, Chief had a good idea of like in and out process of the beer tent, which is great. So there's ways to implement and be better. So that communication goes a long ways. Same thing with the Christmas parade. I think it could be implemented with the Community Days as well, where I understand there's concerns and things like that as well. We take a lot of pride in these events, and we want to be great and safe and successful, not good stuff. You know, I've heard that, like, through hearsay, that there's issues along the way through maybe many years or something like that. But even as a president of the Open Doors, I've yet to ever get an email like, hey, just this, this, this. If there's issues with the event, these guys don't want issues. They want a good event, and they would fix it if we knew the issues. If I'm in your seats and I see a person submitting for an event and that person is notoriously violating what they say, I wouldn't approve that event. Simple as that. I don't think you guys need to make more and more policy. I think your process is good. Just communication would go a long ways. That's it. The last thing with the the police, understand about fiscal responsibility, and I appreciate that. I would just ask you take in consideration the economic impact the event would have on the community for positive, and the revenue that's resulted from that, like the Fourth of July, before you limit the resources to that event. That's it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Are we allowed to ask a question?
Um, sure, briefly.
I just wondered, I wasn't here the last time there was a presentation. How many people are a part of the Open Doors Board or whatever?
Yeah, Teresa, we have seven board members.
Okay.
And the board's just a governing entity, and then all the different subcommittees, like the Community Days and the Fourth of July, and the mommy-son dance and daddy-daughter dance, and those are their own little committees.
Oh, okay, that's right.
And their own groups of people. So, yeah, like Rhonda Mitchell runs the Christmas parade, but she hasn't been on the board.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That clarifies it.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion of possible action regarding a conditional use permit request for lots sixty-seven, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-two of Red Hawk Farms' third addition.
J.S. Chisholm Land LLC is the owners of the Red Hawk Farms' third addition, and they have requested a conditional use permit for duplexes to be built on lot sixty-seven, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-two. The third edition plat included sixteen lots and one outlot that was approved by city council on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. J.S. Chisholm Land would now like to develop duplexes on five of the lots. Two family residential lots require a conditional use permit in R-two zoning. The third edition plat is all zoned R-two. There's no fiscal impact to the City of Milton for the conditional use permit. The development of the land, however, will result in additional tax base within the City of Milton. The Plan Commission did hold a public hearing and review the application at their meeting earlier this evening and forwarded a positive recommendation to the common council. Administration recommends approval of the conditional use permit for lots sixty-seven, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-two in the Red Hawk Farms' third addition to allow for duplexes.
Questions or comments or a motion?
I would move for approval of conditional use permit for lot sixty-seven, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two in the Red Hawk Farms' third addition to allow for duplexes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and I did want to say that during the public hearing at the Plan Commission, we did not have anybody speak on this. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a final plat for the fourth addition to Red Hawk Farms.
J.S. Chisholm Land LLC has submitted a final plat to subdivide two-point-eight-six acres of land into ten lots. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the requirements of Chapter forty-two Land Division of City Ordinance and the City Comprehensive Plan. The property is zoned R-two, which which permits single-family homes. The proposed plat includes the construction of Acacia Lane. There's no proposed parkland dedication on the site, therefore, the developer will be required to make a payment in lieu of dedication as required by Chapter forty-two of City Ordinance. The plat also requires installation of new sewer and water facilities to serve the development, and an existing outlot that was previously developed will provide stormwater management. The recommended motion requires the developer to enter into a residential development agreement with the City of Milton before the final plat can be recorded and development can commence. Plan Commission reviewed the final plat for consistency with the comprehensive plan at its meeting this earlier this evening, and they also did forward a positive recommendation for approval of the plat. There's no fiscal impact to the City of Milton for the approval of this plat. However, the construction of new homes will recognize new taxable value, commensurate with the value of the homes and improved lots. City administration recommends approval of the Red Hawk Farms' fourth edition final plat with the following conditions: Review and approval of the Public Works Committee and approval of a residential development agreement by the Milton Common Council.
I would move approval of the Red Hawk Farms' fourth edition final plat with the following conditions: Review and approval of Public Works Committee and approval of a residential development agreement by the Common Council.
Second.
Any questions or comments? There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding liquor license for Red Zone Pub and Grill LLC located at four-oh-three West High Street.
Michael and Karen Liu of Red Zone Pub and Grill LLC, doing business as Red Zone Pub and Grill, have applied for a Class B retail license for fermented milk beverage and Class B license for intoxicating liquor at four-oh-three West High Street. Michael Liu will act as the agent for the business, and they have taken, now taken ownership of that business, and a new license is required pending the surrender of the existing license from the previous owner at that premise, if approved. The background checks were completed by the Police Department and approved, and the business meets all legal requirements within the city ordinance. And no objections have been received. The public notice was published in the Milton Courier on February seventh of two thousand and twenty-five. Staff does not make any recommendations on liquor license approvals, however, if there is a motion made to approve, staff recommends that the approval be contingent on pending payment of any outstanding charges and license fees.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to recommend the, or move to approve the application for a Class B retail license contingent upon payment of outstanding charges due to the City of Milton.
Second.
And the surrender.
Oh, and the surrender of existing liquor licenses for the premise of four-oh-three West High Street.
Second.
Second, okay. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution two-twenty, two thousand and twenty-five-dash-three, authorizing the execution of closing documents and warranty deed for the sale of land to Charles and Claire Jackson.
The Jacksons have presented an offer to buy a point-seven-four acre parcel of land from the city. They're interested in acquiring the land and have offered a purchase price of eighty-thousand dollars. Resolution two-thousand and twenty-five-dash-three authorizes the execution of closing documents and warranty deed to effectuate the sale of the subject property to the Jacksons. The date of closing would be on or before March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. The City of Milton would see the eighty-thousand dollars go to the general fund with the sale of the parcel. City administration recommends approval of Resolution two-thousand and twenty-five-dash-three, authorizing the execution of closing documents and warranty deed for the sale of land to Charles P. Jackson and Claire A. Jackson, as trustees of the Jackson Joint Revocable Trust dated April fourth, two thousand and nineteen, pending approval of the plat of survey by the Planning Commission.
Questions or comments or a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Yeah, pending the approval.
Pending approval of the plat of survey by the Planning Commission.
Of survey.
Same here, for my second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action, Resolution two-thousand and twenty-five-dash-four, regarding a two-thousand and twenty-four budget finalization amendment.
Resolution two-thousand and twenty-five-dash-four serves as the final amendment to the two-thousand and twenty-four annual budget, allocating residual funds and adjusting the budget as necessary. The resolution must be adopted before the two-thousand and twenty-four audit begins on March tenth. Following the completion of year-end financial tasks, the preliminary two-thousand and twenty-four financial analysis projects four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, forty-four dollars in residual funds. These funds primarily result from higher-than-anticipated permitting fees from the new construction throughout the city and an increased amount of interest earnings throughout the year. Historically, these revenue sources were budgeted conservatively, but for the two-thousand and twenty-five budget, we've adjusted to align more closely with trends from the past three years. So in the upcoming budget year, we shouldn't have such a big difference in revenues. City leadership met to determine the most effective use of these residual funds to offset future expenses and reduce financial obligations in upcoming budget cycles. It was agreed that the funds would be allocated as outlined in the attached list with the resolution, with two-hundred-and-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-seven reserved for future unplanned expenditures. If the council wishes to modify the proposed allocations or further define any of the residual funds from two-thousand and twenty-four to other uses, Resolution two-thousand and twenty-five-dash-four may be amended during this meeting. Additionally, staff requests a budget amendment to align actual revenues and expenditures incurred in two-thousand and twenty-four. These amendments detailed in the resolution have no fiscal impact to the city. Members of the leadership team are available to answer any questions regarding the proposed allocations in front of you tonight. Staff does recommend that the common council approve Resolution two-thousand and twenty-five-dash-four as prepared or amended by the common council.
All right. Questions or comments? It's not uncommon to have a budget amendment. It is uncommon for us to have so many building permits in one year. So, which I guess doesn't really surprise anybody, given all the building going on, but it's hard to anticipate what that that's going to look like.
And for example, too, we pulled building permits in two-thousand and twenty-four. We had a hundred-and-eleven units added. In two-thousand and twenty-three, we had twenty-six, and back in two-thousand and nineteen, we had thirty-two. So we've seen a huge increase between two-thousand and twenty-three and two-thousand and twenty-four, so it's hard to predict.
So I guess I'm curious if we can, without going line by line, understand these these suggested expenditures, if these are nice-to-haves or if they're needs that pull from a future future item. I'm just thinking with the dynamics that are happening in the country and the potential expenses we're going to have in the next year, I like saving as much as we can. Now, if those are items we pull from future, like we're going to spend on this year anyways, and I'm all for it, and I don't want to, again, go line by line, but if you could sum it up for me, is that fair a fair question?
Yeah, so I think the majority would be a purchase within the next year to two years, depending on where we want to go with things. So they would have to come out of future expenses, so this would be a guaranteed place for those to come out of and wouldn't take away from other operations. I don't know if there's anything specific we can dive in, but the majority will be something that's a necessity within the next year to three years.
And DPW has a capital, I mean, we have a capital improvement budget, and you guys have a capital budget that you put together every year, and some of it doesn't, you don't get.
So a lot of these items, you know, they they either are directly in the capital improvement plan that was approved, you know, when that was approved, and will be presented for revision here in the future, just because we've reached kind of the end of the life of that original plan. But several of the items were, have been requested for in the previous budgets and just haven't made it in because funding wasn't available. So we would request those again in a future budget. A couple of the items as well, we've looked at some different alternatives to replace equipment by repurposing and, you know, cost-saving measures that way. So we've kind of done some of that, too. So trying to minimize costs and maximize value and life of the equipment we have.
So if we approve this, as staff recommends, does that automatically then push the money into these different buckets and it's to be spent, or does that come up again? Do all these things come up again to approve?
So if approved tonight, the list would, we would move forward with the items that are on there, except the capital contribution for future expenses, the two-hundred-and-one, three-ninety-seven. That's going to go to our capital fund, and that can be used for future expenses that are earmarked for anything tonight, and we would bring those back to council.
So one of the things that usually we run into every budget, and I anticipate you'll run into next year, is the increase in health insurance costs, and so that's something that can be used to mitigate the increasing rise in health insurance costs, that we know that'll come next year, too.
I'd move approval of Resolution two-thousand and twenty-five-dash-four, the two-thousand and twenty-four budget finalization amendment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application from Agnew Six Properties LLC located at three-forty-seven South John Paul Road.
Agnew Six Properties has applied for a commercial facade grant for three-forty-seven South John Paul Road to replace all the siding, windows, doors, and the monument sign. This request was reviewed by the Community Development Authority and was approved pending to verify verification that the work had not been started, because that is a requirement of the commercial facade grant application. Administrator Hench did go visit the building, and the siding was removed, but no additional work has been completed, so the demolition cost was removed from that. The total cost was three-
So the demolition cost was removed from that. The total cost was three, thirty one thousand nine hundred and fifty, and the grant request is ten thousand, after subtracting that demolition cost for the siding removal. And Administrator Hench has indicated no additional work will be completed on the exterior prior to, if there is the award from the grant. The expense would be covered by tid number seven, and City Administration recommends approval of the grant.
Questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve the facade grant for Agnew Six Properties LLC for 347 South John Paul Road.
Second.
About ten thousand.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding municipal utility easements along Parkview Drive.
The attached easements are being granted by Backyard Properties LLC to the City of Milton for construction of municipal water and sanitary sewer utilities to serve the development. The Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources requires all public utilities to be located within rights of way or easements. There's no fiscal impact outside of staff time for creation of the easements, and developers paying for the cost of the installation of the sanitary sewer and water utilities. And they also paid for the preparation of the easements, so the staff time was just review. And no compensation is being given for the easements. Staff recommends approving the municipal utility easements on parcel V-23-1462.12 and parcel V-23-1462.13.
Questions or comments?
I move to approve the municipal utility easement to parcel V-23-1462.12 and parcel V-23-1462.13.
Same.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding special events. We had our ad hoc committee review several different ordinances from around the state, from other communities, and review our permit process, and they have some recommendations. And we did have a response back from our attorney, and so it's just kind of up to the council how you want to proceed. If you have any questions or comments, the ad hoc committee is all present this evening.
So I guess I'll just point out, if I can, a couple of things. So, if you see, like, the first says, "All special event permits run through council," or perhaps smaller ones under a certain number of participants, you have an "or" there, because it means we didn't all agree necessarily without pointing fingers. So we thought, maybe, we should talk about that. Are there any other "ors" in here, Ken?
I don't think so.
Other than that, these were just good ideas that we, we looked at issues we've seen in the past at events. We looked at how other communities do it, and the whole idea is just safety, and how do we put something together that best protects, you know, our community members in these events as we move forward and we scale bigger and bigger. And some things were kind of common sense, and others were, hey, let's ask a question for the chief and call him out. And we do have a question for you in there, too, chief. If pedestrians can direct traffic was one of them.
No, they cannot. It's one of the downsides to having the larger events is just our lack of police power. They can, they can man intersections if it's just a straight-up road closure, but they can't direct and hold traffic. So like at the Fourth of July event, when we have free-flowing traffic on John Paul and we hold traffic consistently at High Street, just to alleviate blockages. It has to be law enforcement directed at that, those intersections. So, similar to like the homecoming parade or Christmas parade, we have the SWEAP group. And this year, I called on school district staff to help just assist with intersections, not direct traffic, but just assist with safety at those intersections. That's something that, you know, the committee or these open doors can do, the school district can do, but they can't stop and hold traffic. Crossing guards can't even stop and hold traffic. They can cross kids, but they can't, you know, hold and let buses all go out one after another, like a train, which they do, and they've been spoken to. So, it's, it's something that is a continual problem, and some are pretty good about changing that, but they cannot legally do that. So, that's one of the limitations with trying to limit the, our law enforcement component to how much it could cost for the event, is they just can't physically do that, legally do that.
And I'd interject, when we talk about all special event permits coming through the council, I'm a huge proponent of that. It seems to be that we're putting the onus on our city staff when the ultimate responsibility falls with the council. And I think we should put the onus back on the council to approve those. I don't see where it's gonna add a lot of time to a common council meeting to approve those. We approve things routinely as this council. And I would like to see, at least for a while, for at least a year, we can always revisit this as a policy, but having all of the special events permits be approved not by the city, I'd like them to be reviewed and have recommendations, but it should fall to us another layer in there to alleviate any issues and come to the common council for approval. We also had some differences. I'm a firm believer in call sharing. I worked in communities where there was nothing that came for free, absolutely nothing. If there was an event that required city services, that event paid for it, period. I don't think that's right for Milton, but I do believe that as representatives for our taxpayers, we have a responsibility to minimize that. It is, we have some division there, as well as the amount. A kind of a compromise, I would see, is anything over five thousand dollars, we'll support anything, but anything over five thousand dollars, you're gonna write a check back to the city. Because at some point, we have to go, we can't expect the taxpayers to just keep paying and paying for things. And I, I really, I love these events. I think they're wonderful. I think they're amazing. But we also have to have some fiscal responsibility mixed in there as well.
So, you're suggesting that there actually are a couple of levels. One would be an ad hoc committee that would, or everything goes through the city council?
Yes. If you put, my understanding is that's the way it used to be.
Well, there's a reason that it was taken out of that, that it's very, very time-consuming to have all facets of the event brought to the, I'm not gonna be a part of it. I should keep my mouth shut. But, but it can be very time-consuming to have everyone be part of that discussion. That, you know, when you look at the planning commission and all these things that, that you have respect for people that are part of this, they're voted people from our community, but then they bring their evidence that all of the pieces have been met. And then, if the people on the council have questions, that the people on that committee have not met all of the requirements that have been listed as part of the requirements to meet those licensure requirements, but to start from scratch when you come to a meeting, that's a lot.
That wasn't the intent. Hold on, that was not the intent.
Okay, then I misunderstood something.
Yeah, yeah. I need clarification, too, because I didn't understand it like that.
The intent is that it still gets reviewed by the city staff, but then it has to come, and like they do just about every other thing, they come before the council with recommendations. But it puts another layer of eyes on it, where we can ask questions about that, and it puts another layer, so it can, we've had instances where, and it would alleviate those last-minute additions to something. You have to come before the council.
I would agree, but to start with, you know, something that would include the chief and all these levels, so that you know by the time you bring it to the city council, will you have that expense required, like he had? You had just asked some questions, and the chief would be able to investigate, will this be required to have a police involvement? Will you be limited in the amount of expense that the city would be required? As far as drinking, any alcohol involved, what, what level of involvement would be? You can go through a whole list, but before you come here.
Right, because didn't you have a recommendation about a packet would be filled out, reviewed?
So we're not deviating from the policy or the event packet. So it'll continue to go to Jenny, DPW, and the police department. They will do their due diligence. And then, once that's completed, then it will come before council. So all of that will be done.
So we're basically, we're basically adding an additional step to the process. And basically, instead of having the city staff be able to approve any of the simpler event permits, we're now saying that all has to come to council for approval.
Well, I think it would be everything that came to council before we changed this, like a year ago.
I, I think the, the analogy here, we just approved a liquor license. And there was not a recommendation from Jenny, but there was all of the information there to help us, you know, make that decision. And, you know, what I would envision in, in what Ken is suggesting is that we're following that kind of thing. People fill in the paperwork, you know, it may not have a police component. It gets routed to the appropriate folks, DPW, if there are barricades or whatever, but then it comes to us with essentially a checklist. This one has met all the checks. This one, we're a little concerned about this, and then the city council gets to decide.
And then, as part of that packet, if there were previous permit violations, because there was a recommendation to have a bond schedule attached to this ordinance, then that would just be part of the packet. Like, we've had zero permit violations or zero permit warnings.
I would assume that would come from, where does that usually, where does that go now?
I would assume that would come through chief.
It'd go through chief.
Something you would investigate to see if there's been a past violation?
If there was a violation, it'd likely be documented on City Hall's side. And if there were the enforcement component to it, they could potentially be cited for any permit violations. But that's something, too, where we're still working with our city attorney to work on the ordinance for the bond schedule for that.
Because this is just the policy, not the ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance still would need to be amended, though.
Yes.
And the, anything that needed to be incorporated into the ordinance, the attorney would incorporate into the amended ordinance.
And this wasn't to change the, my intent and my view on this wasn't, you know, that we were gonna say, okay, Chief and Mark and everyone else involved, Paul, you have no responsibility. They're gonna bring it out of the common council. We're gonna hash it out. No, we're gonna go through those exact same steps before and then have it come up. And basically, what we're doing is saying that the responsibility for approval of this is the council and not our city employees. So any amendments, anything like that, it's not calling City Hall. You need to come before the council, because we have that authority to make those changes and those amendments to things. And that has to be done not the day of or the two days before an event, but it has to be done in a timely manner so that planning is done, and it's an extra set of eyes that relieves some of the responsibility for this, taking some of these things that are taking place and puts it back on the council where I feel it belongs and off of the shoulders of our city employees.
Oh, is there a motion to recommend these changes to the policy?
Well, I mean, we only talked about, like, what, two of those different items?
Well, did you want to go through each one?
Are we gonna make a motion on each one, or are we gonna?
I think it would be just a motion on all, on all your recommendations, unless you want to change the recommendations that you made. There, that, that, does the ad hoc committee want to change any of the recommendations that they forwarded to the council?
The only thing I wanted to add is because we didn't, we weren't all in unison. I know. Imagine that. Is I, some of us thought, every, what we just talked about, every event permit, due diligence with staff and then come before the city council. Or, my recommendation was even potentially doing a special committee that had, just for event planning, that would do, almost like our big events on a yearly basis are kind of pre-planned and all taken care of via committee, so that it isn't so detailed or the bigger items could be kind of talked through more, like Fourth of July and like Civil War days. Just an idea. I just want to throw it out there.
I do think that that is already happening, pre-planning meetings. I guess I don't know that it's happening on every event, and maybe that can be part of it, but I, I don't know if we want to do staff and then another committee and then the council, then we're adding a third layer. Chief, do you wanna?
I mean, I've met with Fourth of July with Derek. I met with Rhonda for the Light of Christmas Parade. I met with Ryan Keaton for the Civil War days. I haven't met with any, any, the, well, I did, I did meet with the tree lighting ceremony, too, for community days. So there is some pre-planning. I think the only time we have to do an after-action is with the Fourth of July. So they don't always necessarily involve any members from the council, but there are other city staff involved in the larger ones, though.
Oh, you could, I mean, at the discretion of staff, when you review the permit, you could recommend a pre-meeting and a post-meeting as part of the, you know, the permit, right? Or, would you not want to go that far?
Are you talking for that to be city staff's decision when reviewing the permit?
A recommendation, like, on the permit, if, like, so if you're filling out the permit, maybe there's a checkbox, pre-meeting needed or post-meeting needed, or, or how does that, how do you schedule these meetings if it's not right on the permit?
Oftentimes, the event organizer reaches out even before the permit's filed, just for asking questions, because they may not even know if they need a permit for it. So then, you know, I said, yeah, you need a permit. Hey, let's talk about this to square some things up. So, it's not so much back and forth once the permit's actually sent to the city for review. So Derek took, took the opportunity, reached out right away when he set up the Fourth of July meeting. Same with Rhonda, when I transitioned after Scott retired. So, that could be a checkbox on it that says, you know, hey, city leadership or city staff thinks we do need to have a pre-meeting in addition to just the paper that's in front of us. So, I think between, like, Public Works, City Hall, and the police department, and even if the fire, if Lakeside needs to be involved, it's something that we could just sit down and discuss and say, let's do this ahead of time and have an in-person or phone meeting at least.
And I would say with that meeting, too, speaking from the perspective of the Civil War, living in history days, with, Keaton and I are the ones who actually reached out to the police chief, Public Works, the fire department in advance to have that meeting, and actually think that's, I think it's a good idea for any larger event to take that on us and do that on their own, to go ahead and reach out and set that up. But it sounds like there it all are, to some extent.
Some people will and some people won't, right? And I think that's, you know, you can't, that's just an option to think about is having that checkbox, especially someone that's new to the community, or it's a new event, or a new event, or it's an outside the community event, that it's not actually community members that are having a large event.
Couldn't that come to the council, just as any other recommendation, without a checkbox, to say, if someone, either the chief or Mark, or somebody says, you know, we really need to look at this after, and if part of the recommendation is coming before the council, can be that on an individual basis, because they know better than we do, in my opinion, what they may need that for. They're more in the weeds on that. I wouldn't necessarily see a checkbox, but maybe when it comes to council, just like every other thing that comes before us, there are staff recommendations, and that could be part of those recommendations on a case-by-case basis.
Sure.
And I think it also would be a recommendation made at the time the permit's requested, is to reach out to the people requesting and saying, hey, you might want to have a meeting with, you know, these people, the chief or something like that.
Okay, so what's the motion?
So before, just, I can appreciate, Mayor, but there's three items that have question marks, and I don't think we can, we can in good faith pass this, so.
Okay, so that's why I asked. Do you want to go through each one and nobody answered?
Should food trucks be required to show proof of county health certificate? That's one. The other is, should we require a police and security plan on the permit? Maybe a block where you get to write, yeah, we should check IDs at the tent, or we, we have to, we should. We're gonna have a, we would like a roaming police officer during the night hours, things like that, to give, so that we know that event planner was thoughtful about the, what is best for safety. And then the last one, should we require these larger events to have a first aid tent, a place to go if kids get cut or scrape their knees? And that's their responsibility to staff it. I don't think that we would, but do we? So, sorry, I'll dump all that. They're all three are questions. I think we need to answer them, and then we can do this motion, yeah.
Actually, when you do the food truck rally... Ashley, when you do the food truck rally, there is a process with those food trucks, correct? Or there was?
Honestly, all I do is I reach out to them and say, do you wanna be a part of this? And that's it. And then I filled out the event permit.
But didn't the health department come in and do checks?
So yes, and that wasn't, that wasn't brought up by us, the health department knew we were having it and it was on the trucks to be up to date.
It's for Civil War living history days too.
So the question to that is, know them?
So then we have the other ones with the question marks, so the uh, the, on the permit. Or the, the uh form, the packet, that it, should there be a section for uh police and security uh of the event? And a plan in place for some of these larger events where it's, where it's obviously gonna need to be. Cause right now there's, there is, but it's really minimal, I mean, it really doesn't lay anything out.
Chief, what are your thoughts?
I mean, most of the events are outside of, it has, the food truck rally at the library doesn't get too wild. Yeah, but that's why we're doing the special event permitting. Um most of the time, the law enforcement's already there at some capacity, or at the very least we'll interject ourselves and do a walkthrough. Um but most of the events typically don't require a sec- a p- a police presence outside of traffic control. Or for Fourth of July, it's going to be just personnel on the grounds, manning the beer tent or around the beer tent. And that was already discussed with open doors as far as getting a security plan in place and try, or getting additional security. To staff the event just due to our limited staffing, which it's tough because of the holiday. We were short-staffed this last year, I don't anticipate that this coming year, but it's something that's also a gamble. So it's hard for us to dedicate personnel when we're stretching ourselves thin in other areas. So that's already been discussed and that's typically the only event occurring right now in the city that has that strain. Which is why it costs a lot for that event for the city. And sometimes there already is like a security plan in place in some of the events. But again, each event organizer documents their special events permits very differently. Some are very detailed and some are leave, leave a lot of questions in the air. Um I think that'd be uh more of a case by case basis, kind of like a sta- a, you know, city leadership recommendation. If they do need to require some type of security plan, um because most typically don't require it.
Yes, my question to you chief is, would, do you think there needs to be any additions to the packet? Any other information that you would looked at and said, you know, I wish this was on here. I guess that's what we were kind of wondering, if, if you've, we're looking through those and you went, you know, there's a lot in there for DPW. And cause they carried with parades and they carried the, the lion's share of the, the weight on that. But is there anything that you looked at and said, would be nice if this was in the packet and that we can incorporate into this policy, into this packet?
There hasn't been anything that's jumped out at me as far as a need on the packet. If anything, it's a, I'll either touch base with Mark and see if there's anything that has to do with road closures that can impact the security or egress. Points for people or where the parking's going to be, but not necessarily like law enforcement component. Um it kind of coincides though too with maybe there is a need for a first aid tent or designated spot for that. Um especially larger events so people know where to go. Um but there's nothing that really stands out to me though as far as a need to have in that packet. I mean, it's, it's something that could be so simple as if we review it or Mark and I, or even Jenny has a question, we can just add that into the recommendation. Before it goes to council then, if that's the route you guys decided to go.
Um because it had come up before, had to do with ID carding. And does that become a responsibility or is that, you know, dur- dur- I don't know if it's just during Fourth of July. Or if there are other events that have uh that are selling beer on public property?
Uh the beer tent with the Fourth of July event is the only one that there is uh ID checking occurring to my knowledge. And they had staff there to go through IDs last year. Um and after the act, with the after action review is my recommendation that they have. They changed basically the process to get into the tent where it's a separate station to get checked, get a wristband to get admitted. So it's not a choke point essentially at the entrance to the beer tent where they're doing the IDing, certifying people to get them in. Um just to alleviate any potential issues in the future or for the current event. So. That's the only one to my knowledge.
There was some checking, but it was, it was not an additional expense then, it was, okay.
Yeah, correct, law enforcement, the city mil- police department was not involved in checking IDs, that was all volunteer staff from uh open doors.
So my understanding then you're, you're suggesting striking seven and eight, so don't worry about the security plan, you're gonna cover that in your meeting in the first aid tent, same thing. Something you discuss as part of your pre-planning.
That would be by suggestion to city council.
Yes, the only other op- options on here to discuss quick are the um one permit per event, not covering multiple days and I will say that I kind of agree with that. That the idea of having a permit that covers multiple basically events that are occurring over an entire year, that did not seem to work well. And I think that I agree with uh getting rid of, changing that to being, it's a permit per event. It may be consecutive days, it may be one day, but as long as they're in that timeframe, one permit per event. Uh and then I think the last one to discuss is the um cost. Five thousand per event. If we are to go down that path, I would suggest that be, i- if we were to go down that path, I think that we need to make it so that that is put on. It may there is a requirement for next year and not this year because a lot of events are basically raising funds year round. And for the event that would be affected this year, they'd have like less than five months to try to raise the additional funds necessary to cover that. So if we are to go down that path, I think that should be something that's put on for next year, as part of the packet, rather than this year.
Uh Brian regarding um a reschedule, uh scheduling. If it rains or something, they have to, they can't just say, you know, if they're having a community day. Uh downtown on Parkview Drive or something, they can't just say, okay, we're gonna have it next Friday. You know, you have a school there and other things, you, you have to reschedule that with the community.
Yeah.
That's, I just wanna comment on that.
You're talking about the first thing I was talking about, yeah, I, I agree, I mean, if it, if it.
No, no, I think it's a good idea, you have, you, you can't just assume that you can flop that uh around. Because you've written out one application.
Permits for the days that it's your permits for, unless we have some type of requirement that allows for rain days, but. I just wanna make the additional comment about the fact that if we were to have fees aside, tied to this, as in like they had to pay for anything over cer- a certain cost to the city. That part of this policy should not go into effect until next year so that entities have time to raise the funds to cover that increase. I would say that when we looked at this and looked at that amount, most of the events were under that five thousand. I understand, but. So I don't know the impact that it would have this year, then if we set it at five thousand, where would the impact be? It's still, it's one event, but what I'm ki- uh commenting on is, well, let's see here. Based on the information we're given, let's see here, I think Fourth of July took what, ten thousand dollars in city funds approximately? So that means now open doors has five months to go ahead and acquire an additional five thousand dollars to cover that funds if we were to try to impose this, this year. What I'm saying is because that'd be a cost increase this year and they've already probably gone through most of their fundraising efforts. That it would not make sense to impose that additional cost to them this year, but that would instead be going to effect for next year.
You um, you cannot write an ordinance specific to one entity.
I'm not talking about doing one for, I'm talking about the policy first of all, and I'm just saying.
You can't do it for one, if you wouldn't have said a specific entity, but you're, it's. A very fine line to create guidelines for one specific entity, so we're not. We're talking about anybody that would request a permit, not.
Correct, I'm not talking about any one entity, I'm using, using that as an example of one that would be affected by the policy now based off his, uh Ken's question. I'm talking about any entity in the city trying to have an event that maybe it'll cost over five thousand dollars in city funds, using the number that's in the policy. The, I plant the idea here, if we were to stick to that, I think that any entity that went over five thousand dollars. It'd be hard to just go ahead and tell them that this year if they've already done all the fundraising.
You know, and until Ryan said that, I thought perhaps he was thinking of Civil War days. You know, if the number were different, um it, it might affect um, you know, others. So um, uh I think I'd be okay with that, I don't know quite how we um implement that. Can we have uh, maybe that's a question for the attorney. Um you know, can we uh have this set up so that it kicks in in twenty six? Just, just that, just that, that.
I'm asking about the, the whole thing or if you can, can you give us?
I think we need the whole thing now. Can we have included in that whole thing? Something that says that the fee is instituted in twenty six.
And I'm only talking about that part, yeah, the rest of it, it's fine with going into effect this year, it's, it's that part. And then what happens after a year, cause it's a policy and not an ordinance, easy to change, then people want to keep changing it down the road, why not just institute the policy now? No, you can make it effective, different provisions affect on, on a different date. If you wanted to do that for the event costs. And I understand that part and that's fine, uh again, I say, then all of a sudden a year down the road, people want to then amend this policy and then, and it keeps going and going. When we have a policy that everybody agrees is a, a decent policy. And that we do had to have, need to have some cost sharing to offset that cost to the taxpayers, but then we want to keep setting it off and that, and that I don't agree with.
I know, so we've been talking about cost sharing for fourteen years.
And sidewalks too, at some point you have to stop and do something, you can't just keep putting it out because somebody doesn't like it.
It isn't a new thing, so I can attest that we've been talking about cost sharing for fourteen years. I was one of the original people that were on the committee, the Fourth of July committee. Um after we didn't have a um, a um carnival. The city created a Fourth of July committee and so fourteen years ago we talked about cost sharing, so. I can see where you might have a concern that it's constantly put down the road, cause it's been put down the road for fourteen years, but that's the only.
I'm bringing it up as my ex- expert, you know, experience when it comes to creating events. And that you're usually fundraising well in advance, you know, a year to six months out before the event. By the time you're six months before an event, you're already raised all your funds and you're working then on trying to actually put together the plan and stuff. So all the fundraising is done for ha- uh half the, the events that, for half of this year, or most of this year, the events that could occur that may. Potentially pop up that we don't even know about that could be over this threshold, then be, probably, have probably already finished fundraising at this point. I understood that when you said it the first time. What I'm saying though is. Yeah, uh what I'm saying though is, that seems to be a theme, is as soon as somebody doesn't like something, we go, okay, well, we'll try. And at some point you have to do something or you're doing nothing. And, and I'm a firm believer in getting off the pot and, and getting something done.
Motion Ken and see if you get a second.
Okay, that's a good point, now I have to pull this up. I guess I would move to uh make the changes to the permit process and to the policy. As we've outlined and spoken with here in reference to um special event permits coming through the common council. Uh the one permit per event. And if any money is owed or past fees are not paid, this, uh this can affect uh future permits. And the event cost sharing to be um under five thousand per event. And that would be effective immediately or? Effective immediately.
Alright, there's a motion, is there a second? Alright, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Does that mean that we have, we have not taken off the hold though for special event permits right now, correct? Until we get the ordinance or are things now unfrozen?
Uh the motion that was just made was for the, the policy to change, not specifically in the ordinance. Um it, you can make a change to the ordinance if you choose to, um based on the attorney's recommendations previously. Uh there's discussion about the penalties which the court needs, which is already set. Um in the fact that we have that information included in the ordinance about penalties under special events. But the municipal judge does need to set a bond schedule and that will be on the next agenda for that portion of it.
Do we need, um, the council doesn't need to direct staff to ask the judge to set the bond schedule, right? That's already in process?
That is already in process, yes.
It, it's part of her responsibilities.
That was a clarification made by the attorney that, that needed to be, to happen to have that bond schedule. Um since it was included in that ordinance already. Um so this would be the policy and so since the motion included the policy to be effective immediately, it would be effective. Tomorrow, uh with that, uh but there is still the hold on accepting. Special event permit applications until March fifth, unless there's a change to that.
Okay, anything else we need to, we don't need to, the council doesn't need to do anything else in relation to the ordinance? Okay, alright.
Actually, I believe there's going to need to be a change to the ordinance, cause the ordinance itself does have the information about nonprofits. Those fees are automatically waived, so there's cost sharing for the policy. That for, and it negates the for-profit versus nonprofit, if that is the policy, then yes, there would be, need to be an ordinance change.
We'll look at the ordinance as drafted, make any changes that are necessary based on these policy decisions and get it before you next month. Fair?
Sounds good. Okay, committee reports. Anything for anybody? No meetings? No park? Alright, um staff reports, Mark?
I don't have anything to add from my discussions earlier tonight, so thank you.
Kelsey?
Just in my final preparation for audit that starts on March tenth.
Chief?
Uh so this week at the library, oh sorry, it's your thing. Good news, uh new recruit, uh sorry, not recruit, law enforcement recruit, our newest officer Nick Moore did successfully pass phase one of the law enforcement academy. So two more to go, um doing well with that. Um with um Craig Quarter going solo, he's also loving third shift now, that did allow Ryan Schneider to get back into the schools last week. Um so the district is really happy with that and he's much enjoying first shift over third shift. Um and I did get noticed that our two squads did arrive, um so those will look at getting outfitted, at least start of the process next week. Um other than that, nothing else.
Thank you, Ashley.
Um our Friends of the Melon Public Library book sale starts next Saturday, March first. And the library is launching a walking club, there's lots of interest in the community for walking friends and groups, so the library organized it. So every Sunday or Saturday at nine thirty, there'll be a walking club and then we'll add an evening one once the. Um becomes lighter outside earlier, so very excited for that.
Jenny, anything?
Just elections, so yesterday we had I, our spring primary, first election of the year, uh four hundred and fifty-eight voters. So it was relatively slow compared to our last election, um and I'd like to thank all of our election officials, including uh Ken and Charlotte who assisted. Um and everything went, of course, very smoothly as always, which is fabulous. Um what, two things I wanna mention is on the budget amendment that was tonight, we had voting booths and Badger books. So for the Badger books, um those are something that we ordered based on our current population with the hundred and eleven new building per, or. New housing units, um it is an opportunity to get ready for those and new people within the city. Because uh with increase in that and then also voting booths, we need two hundred per, two, or excuse me, one. Voting booth per two hundred people within the city and as we increase, we need to get more. So we are right at that cusp, so we are definitely gonna be ready with uh new ones, so that's all I have.
Okay, team building, well you all know, I mean, you had two weeks this time. It's the same one as we didn't do last council meeting. Dad jokes.
I'll go first.
Dad jokes?
Well, you know, it's real cold outside, so just a suggestion, go stand in the corner, it's around ninety degrees.
I had surgery recently and when it came to sewing me up, I, I asked the doctor. I had surgery recently and when it came to sewing me up, I I asked the doctor, I said, I'd like to do it myself. Doctor said, suit yourself.
Why was Cinderella so bad at soccer? She kept running away from the ball.
I told my wife she needed to embrace her mistakes and she gave me a hug.
What do you call a toothless grizzy, grizzly?
What?
Gummy bear.
Why do ants not get sick? They have antibodies.
What is the best time to go to the dentist? Two thirty, two thirty.
How do you find Will Smith in a snowstorm? You look for fresh prints.
Well, it has more lives than a cat, a frog, because it croaks every day.
Mine is really bad. Uh, which is faster, hot or cold? It's hot because it's easy to catch a cold.
Oh, thank you, thank you. We'll, we'll let that go. Did everybody go? Charlotte, did you go?
I'm so good at sleeping that I can do it with my eyes closed.
Okay, okay. Our next meeting date is March fourth. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All those in favor? Okay, we're adjourned. Good job, you guys.